Can I call the October 6, 2020 Committee to Hold Board of Aldermen to the whole order? Could you please call the role presenter? Start playing on the thing. He's shaking her head there. All right, call me to your order, Mr. Barrett.
I can hear you guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Barrett.
Alderman Green.
Excuse.
Alderman Ager.
Excused.
Alderwoman Emerson.
Excused.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderwoman Van Buskerk.
Here.
Alderman Van Buskerk.
Here.
Alderwoman Mears.
Here.
Alderman Walters.
Excused.
And Alderman Hunt.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, we have a quorum. All right, the first thing is the approval of the August 18, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Still no.
Ms. Mary Jane Van Buskerk, second is Mr. Myers. Any discussion? Any discussions? None? Call the board please.
Alderman Hunt.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Of state.
Alderwoman Van Buskerk.
Yes.
And Alderman Myers. Alderwoman Mears, sorry.
Yes. Who did the second?
It was Alderman Myers.
Who did?
Who abstained? Is that what you asked?
No, I asked who did the second on the motion.
Yes, it was Alderman Myers.
Mary Jane got the motion, Alderman Myers, second, okay? All right, our next is snow operations presentation. Want to contact Jose Leon.
Thank you, Mayor. Lord Alderman, good evening. For you tonight, we're going to present-
Let me interrupt you just a minute. Ms. Vanz, would you mute yourself? Oh, it's not her?
No.
Okay, never mind, go ahead. Go ahead, Jose.
We're going to, Tony actually is going to present to you this evening our snow operations. And reason for this presentation is just to give you an idea of how much planning and effort goes into snow operations altogether before we actually get snow. And hopefully help you understand some of the challenges that we face out there when the weather is upon us. So, we're going to go through this and Tony will leave some time for any questions or comments afterward. Go ahead, Tony.
Good evening, Mayor. Board of Aldermen, thank you again for this opportunity. This is, happens to be my 33rd snow season that we're heading into, so it never gets old. All right, I'm going to lead off with, I'm going to cover our goals and objectives. And our goal is provide reasonably safe driving surface, cost-effective product in a timely manner, and keep our staff safe. And I want to touch real quickly on the reasonably safe driving surface. You know, it's, it can be subjective. It is winter. I just want to make sure that, that everybody understands you can't always achieve bare proof of that. In our objective, to achieve our goals, we want to treat the streets as needed with the right type and amount of material. That's critical. It's very science-based that we, that we work in. We strive to, to achieve curb to curb when we're clearing. We want to ensure that we have gotten to every street that's prescribed on each event. We want to respond to our customer concerns in a timely manner. And we really want to work the plan. And so, the residents of our community, community count on us. It's very important to make sure we're taking care of them. We're responsible for treating and maintaining 331 lane miles of roadways. That includes over 100 cul-de-sacs, roughly equal to driving from here to Marshfield in Missouri and back. We have well-established mapping. Our cities divided up, as you can see, into roughly six sections. It's actually seven sections because we work our four-lane roads as an individual section. Our reds are primaries, greens secondaries, blues are high priority, residentials. Reds very strictly, very closely mimics our emergency snow routes. Our greens help, help after the, getting through the primaries, our greens are, help us get deeper into a neighborhood. And then the blues, they help us get through some areas that have special needs, like hard to get into, steep hills and what have you. Our emergency snow route map, again, it, it very closely mimics what we use as our primary. It's the guide that we, we take to try to keep as many of our higher-speed streets open as possible. Many people want to know, where do we start and where do we stop? How do we get from A to B in snow removal? We begin every season in the same place and we end it in the same place. We start out, we, we make sure that the contractors know they've got to get off the street with plates. We, we prep and maintain our equipment. We have our drivers go out and drive their sections, familiarize themselves. We have people that have been here a long time and they still find things that have changed since the last time they plowed. So, during the season, it's an ongoing maintenance issue. End of season, we go through and clean everything and seal it up and put it away. And we also, towards the end of our season is when we put our salt out to bid and we fill our salt barn for the next Preparing for a snow event, preseason's over, it's really time for the work to begin. We, we monitor the weather in a multi-stage process. We try to determine what type of event is going to be, pre-treating, and how many do we need, when's the storm going to arrive, when do we transition. Our crews, by the way, work 12-hour shifts, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. or 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Our parks department is an integral part of our snow removal. They help maintain city facilities lots so that we can spend time out on the main roadways. And then our building maintenance staff takes care of the sidewalks. Our weather resources, we, we actually have a weather service on, under contract, whether or not. They're very accurate in taking care of us locally. We also depend on the National Weather Service. And we, we use other sources as well. And it's not that we don't trust what we already have, but we're looking for anomalies or we're looking for everybody to concur. That helps us make a better decision. When we get to be about one day out from snow, our equipment's ready to go. Crews are cleaning trucks, equipment's fueled, we're staging them in the building. We're really following the forecast close now because we're looking for that start time. We're looking for any changes in the direction. And we're coordinating our, with parks and City Hall and, and trying to make sure that we're all ready to go and we're all on the same page. Working the storm, here's where the fun begins. When the snow starts really falling heavily, we generally will stop treating and continue to plow. And that's so we're not throwing salt off coming right back and plowing it off, okay? We're looking to conserve materials where we can. Plows down, we're working, we start working the primaries and we're going to continue working them until such time we can shift off to the secondaries and then we move into the residentials. Cul-de-sacs, I would like to address cul-de-sacs specifically. They're plowed concurrent with the rest of the streets. We don't bypass them. We don't come back later. They're done when the street is done. And then, some of the things that we struggle with every year, parked cars, and as you can see, there's a classic example of traffic on the roadway.
I didn't really hear what that is. Re-explain what you did on your prioritization, which treats you do first.
On, on the prioritization, again, we use, we prioritize our streets by red or primary, then secondary streets, and then residential streets. So, we will continue, when we start into a snow event, we'll plow. And sometimes we have to plow the primary streets a number of times to keep those open. Those are the, primary streets are generally the higher speed, higher traffic, higher traffic loads. And they are the ones that give the best access for emergency personnel to get to neighborhoods, okay? And then we'll move into secondary streets, once we can kind of lay by the, the primary some. And that helps get residents and emergency personnel deeper into neighborhoods and gives them a shorter distance to go on maybe an untreated street. And then as soon as we can get off those, we move right into residentials and start plowing. Working in storm, materials, applications, we try to use a very low baseline for salt. It's, it may be lower than some, it may be about the same as some, but we try to run 200 to 300 pounds a lane mile to begin with. And the reason being is we're trying to conserve, and we've been very effective at getting very similar results. I'm going to tell you, salt's on a sliding scale. As the temperature goes down, the salt has to go up. So, we, we have to work and make, make constant decisions. We really try, again, not to, not to spread salt while we're plowing because many times we have to plow the same street a number of times during an event and that just is material plowed into the storm drains, okay? So, we're looking to conserve every chance we can. We do do, we do some liquid pre-treating from time to time. We do have a beet juice distributor and storage facility. I will tell you that that is a very case-by-case basis. It's not a shotgun event. We have to make sure how the storm is going to come in and we've got to be fairly confident in it several days in advance. If we, if we guess wrong, then it comes in wet, it's just material going down the drain. So, we're very, very, very conservative when it comes to use of materials. Working as a team, staffing responsibilities. Again, we, we divide our city into roughly eight areas, seven are streets. And, and one is city facilities. Streets are divided into six sections. And then the seventh is our four lanes. We work 12-hour shifts. Parks also comes in, works similar shifts with us, especially during heavy events to make sure that City Hall and the police area is well taken care of. Our building maintenance person takes care of the sidewalks. Sometimes we have to join in and help that. But to put it into perspective, when fully staffed, it's 13 to 15 people in constant motion to do what we do. This is, this is something I want to emphasize a lot. Teamwork is the, is our secret to success. A number of area communities often wonder why Raytown does what it does and how we come out with the snow removal that we have as consistent as we have. And it's because teamwork is our secret to success. As we start completing different areas, we start cascading, we start doubling up, and eventually you wind up with almost everybody available into that last area. So, we do a lot of tracking, taking care of, keeping track of what we're doing, how much salt we're putting down. If we have a problem in an area, we like to make sure we take pictures so we can better understand. If we can't get a truck into a neighborhood, it's generally because it's blocked. GPS, we do have GPS tracking of our trucks, but we still want our drivers to manually check it because they can't see the GPS while they're driving. We can see it afterwards. And then we try to make sure that we know what's going on with equipment and things as the shift What can we do better? There's always something we can do better. I'm going to tell you, cul-de-sacs are a weakness. They're a weakness for us, they're a weakness for a number of people. But we try to make sure that we, try to find the right place to put the snow in, in a cul-de-sac and try to get it as clear as possible. We struggle a little bit with parking in cul-de-sacs. We try, try to make sure we're doing a good job tracking our work and do our best to get it open curb to curb. We do track calls. We do get a lot of calls during snow removal. Every call is important to us, okay? But not every call we get's an emergency. We try to get as much information as we can, let them know what stage we're working on. And we do keep a log so that supervisors and myself have an opportunity to go back and double-check during our quality control and quality assurance. I will tell you, health, fire, and police get handled as quickly as possible. If there's an immediate need, we reallocate staff so we can take care of that. Our communications, we make sure that we send our communications through the proper channels. You'll see postings on social media and what have you. Generally speaking, all of this communication will go through Jose. Any kind of media communication, sometimes we get contacted by the media. And we want to make sure that that goes through either Jose or Damon. And then social media responses, there's all kinds of that that goes on. People, you know, want to know what's going on. And we do leave that to our public information folks.
Before, before we take questions, if I can, just say that, you know, from a staff perspective, we prepare for snow, I mean, we're having these conversations around June or July is when we're, we're starting to really talk about snow. And that's because Tony's trying to get us ready with the, the salt purchasing, get that completed, make sure we're all stored up, and we're taking a look at our equipment. And then we come into the fall, planning and preparing our staff, our equipment as well. Here, this week actually, we're having what we're calling a snow rally. And what the public will see is our staff going out into their areas with the trucks and the plow, driving around. And that's on purpose. We want our folks to get out there, to identify issues while there's no weather, no snow on the ground, no slippery conditions. Things may have changed. We don't know. So, you know, these are things, this, this planning effort, it, it is throughout the year. It is not something that we just do, you know, between December and, and February. So, I just wanted to state that.
Yeah, I, I want to add something too. For me personally, the snow season, 19, 20 snow season ended in May. That's when I loaded the salt barn. That's when I could close the books on May. And in June, like Jose said, I started working on 2021.
Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, let me start by saying, when I moved to Raytown in 2006, the two things that really struck me about what a great community Raytown was, was the responsiveness of the police and the quality of the snow plowing. Coming from Kansas City, I lived on a side street that the city would tell you, we're just never going to plow. I mean, we are not going to plow it. And I could get out, but I had neighbors that just, when it snowed, they were homebound for two or three days. So, I will tell you, I think Raytown has, not only does a fantastic job with its snow removal, but has a reputation for that. So, thank you, and all the people that work for you for doing that.
Thank you.
So, I've got a series of questions. I think they're all pretty short and simple. These maps that you sent, have they changed recently or are these essentially the same, more or less? I mean, there's no radical change?
No new changes.
Okay. So, I, I know there's been some concerns about staffing levels and having enough people to kind of move the snow. Is that something that requires a commercial driver's license? Is that one of the obstacles?
Commercial driver's license and actually just, it's very, we're in a, we're in a very difficult market right now. I'll just say that.
Okay. But that is one of the challenges, is working with the commercial licensing. And so, I, did I understand you correctly that the salt is, that's a completely separate pass? That is not done when you're plowing? You plow and then you come back and apply the salt?
Not necessarily. We, when we start out, we'll, we'll put down some material to begin with. And then as accumulation starts building, then we kind of hold off on that till we, and then we cover it on our last pass.
Okay.
So, as we're finishing plowing, that's when we material. We don't make a separate pass for it.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's fine to me. I was just trying to understand how you explain that. So, thank you. And you say cul-de-sacs are a problem. Would it be worth considering some sort of wardenance that would allow cul-de-sacs to be added to the emergency snow orders when the mayor declares that? I mean, if that's a, especially if it's a fire and police and EMS issue, is that something we as a board should be considering?
Yeah, and, and I think Alderman Ward, cul-de-sacs are an issue for a number of reasons. And it's not because we have lack of talent.
Oh, I don't mean to suggest-
The room, the room, no, no, no. And I, I wasn't thinking you were insinuating that. Our people are definitely trying their hardest. I think a snow ordinance, adding that to the emergency snow route, it could help. It doesn't change the amount of space that we have to put snow. That's a challenge in a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, but it'd at least get the cars parked there.
It, it will at minimum do that. But even then, but even then, they can be a challenge because as you well know, not everybody listens to a, a, a snow ordinance. I mean, when, when it's enacted, some people just don't care, you know, tow my car. And so, I, I don't want to say it's the end-all, be-all. It, it could be an example of something that we could look at, for sure.
I, I think, you know, depending on what was presented to us, I think I would be interested in seeing something like that. But I'll leave that to staff if, that's something we want to propose.
Can I, can I throw in if you don't mind, since I've been out there not only pushing snow, but from the police standpoint? Problem you have with that is what are you going to do when it's piled up and you get a snow ordinance? You're going to tie up police and, and everything, waiting for a tow truck to get there? And sometimes you'll have four or five cars. It makes it a lot more difficult.
That could be an issue, but I like to think that people will, generally speaking, try to obey the law. And I know not everybody will and not all the time.
I think it's an educational thing, too, if we make sure that people are educated. Because for instance, the one thing that they put out every year, and a lot of people unfortunately don't pay attention to, is they do a great job of putting out about making sure you clear, when you're clearing your driveway, you clear back to the downward side of where the plow's coming from so that when they come through, it doesn't bury your driveway. And they've done a good job of getting that information out there. Unfortunately, people don't always pay attention to that. I've always done it that way and it's, it makes a big difference because instead of snow like this, you got snow like that. So, I think a lot of it's an educational issue.
Yeah, and I personally go a step further. I put out those tall reflective fiberglass stakes all up and down my curb because I live on a corner. And I know that, you know, it's impossible for them to tell where it is. And I had one year where it looked like they ran the blade a foot into my grass all the way down. And that wasn't, that's not a criticism. I mean, they're doing the best they can and it's hard to see where it is. And if you miss feeling that curb, it's just, so I put those out there to try and help make their job a little bit easier.
That does help.
Absolutely.
And then the last question I have is, what sort of coordination do you do with our fire and EMS to make sure that, you know, that whatever you're doing is being maximally beneficial to what they need?
We're in direct communication with them. If they need something, they call us direct. So, they're able to reach us at any time. And if they, we, we've responded to fires, any number of, of instances where they needed immediate help, we're there.
Thank you very much.
Let me compliment you, having ridden with you and some of the other guys and having done that myself way, way a long time ago before you had the equipment we've got now. And also tossing salt out of the back of a truck because we didn't have very many salt spreaders. I think you guys continue to, every single storm, do a fantastic job. And everybody always talks about what a great job you guys do. In fact, some, I think it's really interesting when you guys out do MoDOT. And you know, MoDOT's usually pretty, pretty quick and pretty on top of things. But there's been a lot of times the last couple winters that we've, we've had snow, you guys have got everything cleared before they even get the least little bit off of the highway. So, I just, if you guys have never ridden with them, it's, it's very interesting. I've, I've made some videos while we were pushing snow and some of the things like Tom about cul-de-sacs, I've seen, I've seen some of the problems with that. But they still handle it and they handle it very well. And then, of course, the main roads, they just do an amazing job on. So, kudos to all of your guys. And I know you lead the charge on that. And, and I appreciate all the years that you've been doing that and how well you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mary Jane Van Busker.
I just want to share this with you. It was when Bill served his first term as Alderman, and it was a bad one, that one. And he wasn't home. I think he was visiting our son out. I got this phone call from this elderly lady and she said, "I need some milk." She said, "I don't know how I'm going to get it." And I said, "Well, take a while. I'll go get you some milk." She goes, "Oh, no, the weather's too bad." I said, "Oh, no, believe me. I can go, I can go get you the milk." I said, she said, "Well, how you going to do it?" I said, "I'm going to drive. I'm going to put my flashers on, my lights on, horn, my horn." And I said, "They'll get out of my way." And she said, "Well, if I need you to go get milk, I'll call you back." I never heard from her again. I think I scared her is what I did. But anyway, you may get those calls from citizens saying, "Hey, you know, I need some groceries." But now we have IV that delivers, which is a great service to our seniors and everybody, you know. But I just thought it was funny that she called and said she needed milk. And I said, "Well, I'll go get it for you." I told her how I do it. I don't think I impressed her off my driving skills. So, anyway, but I was willing to help.
Mayor, if I could, one, one second.
Go ahead.
So, just to add on to Alderman Ward's comment about the, the staffing issues that Tony pointed out, we are in an interesting time right now, particularly with staffing up in our maintenance worker positions. We, we have, and I would say especially Tony and Debbie, our HR, an incredibly difficult time getting people to not necessarily apply but show up for us for interviews and things like that. We, Tony and I have had a lot of conversation over the last several weeks about what are we going to do staffing-wise with this operation specifically. So, we're intending to bring that to you all as, as an item here in the future meeting. And I just wanted to preface that meeting with, with part of that.
Appreciate that.
I was just going to mention, I don't remember how long it's been, but a few years back during one of our winter storms, I get a call from a lady whose, whose husband was disabled. And they were having difficulty, you know, getting out of there and getting him out of there. Anyway, but I remember making a call to our Public Works Department at the time. And they got it worked out. And they got it, they assisted them in getting what they needed so that the, it was clear where they could get out of there and, and do what they needed to do. But I, I remember how much I really appreciated it. I know they appreciated it too. And I know there's situations like that that come up sometimes, special, special situations where an area may need some additional clearing for a situation like that. So, I did, I did appreciate that.
Mayor, I have a quick questions for you. Tony, one is kind of sticking with communication. What is your expectation, like with citizens, communication during like overnight events? I know typically you got, you wanted to like, you mentioned communication earlier. What do you, what should they do, citizens do?
I, I would say first of all, be patient. The, one of the, one of the things that often strikes me is the snow just started and we're starting to get calls that we haven't got to your street yet. And, and that's legitimate. And I understand their concerns, but give us time to work the plan. And if you have a concern, communicate it to the Public Works Office, get your call in. They're tracking them. And then we can come back in an orderly fashion and verify, you know, when we're, when we're following up.
Also, as far as, because you explained it pretty, really well about your red and your, your green streets, regarding those typically, well, I guess the other- green streets, regarding those typically, well, I guess another question would be, how has COVID changed any of your operations or how has it affected your operations?
Yeah, COVID is going to drastically alter our operations. We are having to monitor our staff very closely. It's altered the, the environment to hire drastically. It's changed that draw, that job market. And I can tell you, as we monitor staff, I can envision a time where we could have an outbreak, and it's going to happen not just to us, I hope it doesn't happen to us, but other communities and, and other entities out there that provide the same service are in the same struggle.
Anything else? Ms. Bims? And then Mr. Ward? And then Bill? Can't hear you, Ms. Bims. She just killed her video.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. I wanted to say, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation that we got to see you. But also, I think it needs to be said that the media last year made a commentary about the cleaning of Raytown roads, and they, they were giving us accolades about how well our roads were cleaned compared to a lot of the other roads. And so I just wanted you all to just know that you all did a fantastic job last year and the year before. But when the media brought it up, I just, and I only had one call, and it was over in an area that was kind of like a, a little short road, but our people were already out on the road that had taken care, had taken care of it. The person that called was complaining and wasn't even at home. So I just wanted to put that out there to say thank you, guys. You did do a fabulous job and when we can be with you, it's a pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this question is perhaps from Mr. Hodges. At one point, I think we subscribed or participated in a service called Nixle and, or Nixie, something like that, and then I know we stopped, I think, for budget reasons. Have we restarted that? Because that seems like that would be a good way to get information out to people. They get a text message, I think, from the city telling what the status is.
Yes, we did restart it.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't know, have we published that or promoted that?
We have, we will just more.
But I don't think I ever got re-signed up after that first time. And I find that a valuable service. I don't use Facebook or Twitter, anything like that.
And typically, next we go through it through our police department, but we will work on getting some back out to them. And it kind of, I'll let Alderman Van Busker, but I was going to speak to that same thing, that part of our communication is we like to use a little social media, especially Twitter and Facebook, to try to get, put things out, like say, for instance, if you want to state that we're working on red roads right now, primary streets, are we moving to our next phase? And those we can put out there and then do in the evening time as well or overnight, that we are aware of the event and give a quick number. And Nixle does the same. It kind of gives that communication piece that we like to get from everyone.
Mr. Van Busker?
Yeah, and what I was talking about earlier, I was talking about the elderly couple and he was disabled. You know, and I'm sure you have situations like that from time to time when you have to go in and clear a specific area or a cul-de-sac. I think, I think it's may have been a cul-de-sac, I can't really remember, or I think it was on a dead end, I think. And it hadn't been cleared yet, but it was important that they get out there and get out of there. I'm sure you have situations like that come up, special, special needs. I was going to say, I, you know, just talking about the COVID thing and the effect that would have, and I'm, I'm sure there's been many years when you've been affected by the flu virus that's hit your crews and, and, you know, taken, taken probably a lot of people that out of service that, that could have been, could have been working. And so I'm sure you've had to deal with those kind of things in the past and other viruses, the virus epidemics that we've had. So, you know, this would be certainly not something new to have to deal with that, I'm sure. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, that was probably the more of the financial impact. I was asking that question of Tony May, looking at their operations, if they have, a lot of times they go around single cab and, and, you know, but, you know, in the past, we've offered rides to people that want to do a ride along, but that's less, that'll probably less, maybe more apprehensive to do that because of COVID and things of that sort. And the amount of, you know, ultimately, the amount of, of employee pool in comparison to recent past, I don't think we've ever had a time where you schedule five interviews and two people show up. So that's just the day and time that we're in. Tony, can you kind of speak more to the public about why it's important to park on a certain side of the street when we do those certain things that I don't think everyone really understands that? You kind of was asked that earlier on the emergency declaration, but why is that important in parking?
Sure, I'd be happy to address that. So ideally, most of our neighborhoods actually have driveways and many of those driveways are completely unoccupied. Ideally, you will park off the streets when it's all possible. I encourage that, you get the best, absolute best results on snow removal, your neighborhood, it happens faster and your neighborhood looks better at the end. If you can't park on the, in the driveway for whatever reason, maybe you don't have a driveway, if everyone can park on the same side of the street, then it, it gives us the ability to clear a wider area and not have areas where we're serpentine-ing in and out of parked cars. And sometimes those parked cars are parked so close that our vehicles can't go through and we just back out and have to leave it.
And the other one is, you had a, you showed an application, I get asked this quite a bit, when we use the terminology of beet juice?
Yep.
Can you explain a little bit more about what that is and when that's typically utilized?
Our, our beet juice is actually, the beet juice itself is, is just a suspension device. The beet juice is, is fortified with salt brine, and in our case, we also fortify it with magnesium chloride. The beet juice itself helps stick it to the pavement so it doesn't blow off if we can put it down a few days in advance, and it stays there until reactivated again by the moisture. So it, it makes it more effective at pre-treating when the snowstorm is ripe for it. And like I say, it's, it's suspended salt brine, it's dried, it's liquid salt brine, it dries up to white dust. If it didn't have the beet juice to stick it to the pavement, it would blow off. You've probably actually seen the unfortified salt brine out on the highway some.
Definitely. And then next one, I know I'm probably asking all these questions, but would be your fleet, the different type of vehicles you use depend, depending on the area? Kind of explain those, the types of vehicles you purchased here in the past and why you use those for different areas?
Sure. We use a wide variety of trucks, all the way from three-quarter ton pickup, pickup trucks that I actually drive one of. And we have F-550s with snow plows on them. We also have 7000 series internationals, we have 8500 series internationals. So we have all the way up to what is referred to as a baby eight, class eight truck, tandem axle truck, and we use a variety with the snow plows from nine feet to 11 feet. And it depends upon the actual work we're trying to do, whether we're clearing a four-lane street, whether we're working in a neighborhood. We, we use single axle dump trucks a lot in neighborhoods as well as F-550s. And a lot, like I said, a lot of times you'll see a pickup truck out there, supervisors contributing. They're, they're out there looking, doing quality control, quality assurance, but they're also contributing.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. We'll be adjourned till 7:00 PM.